To order, and what we're going to do is we're going to start with an invocation from Murray Gossett, and then we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you guys wouldn't mind all standing as Murray comes forward.
Okay, let's pray together. Lord, we do thank you that your loving kindness indeed never ceases, your compassion never fails, they are new each morning and afternoon. Great is your faithfulness, oh Lord. Probably want to pray for some folks today. We pray for Cole, we pray for Josh, Tom, Lee, Don. We're grateful, Lord, that you have moved these folks into these important positions. We ask that your Holy Spirit might guide them not only today, but in the weeks, months, years to come. We ask, Lord, that as they work together, Lord, they would seek your face. May they know your will, oh Lord, as they touch many lives and have important positions. But, Lord, you have, what you guide, you will provide, and you will give them every grace they need to do their job well to honor you. We thank you again for this day, oh Lord, in Christ name we pray. Amen.
If y'all will join me in the pledge, please. Pledge of Allegiance?
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, at this time, we're going to do public comment, and I will ask our city secretary, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do not at this time, Mayor.
So because it is not a typical business meeting, we will not ask for anyone to speak since they didn't sign up, but you are welcome to speak at the next one this next Tuesday if you have something, or you can reach out to any of us individually. At this time, we're going to move on to item five on our agenda items, and we will consider the resolution number 070523-1. Ms. City Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Today, we are canvassing the results of our runoff election that was held on June 24th. We had a total of 11,715 valid and legal ballots cast in this election. Josh Kraft received a majority of the votes cast and was duly elected as Council Member Place One. Les Simpson received a majority of the votes cast and was duly elected as Council Member Place Four. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does council have any questions for Ms. City Secretary?
I don't.
You do not?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 070523-1, as presented on the agenda.
A second. Okay, Ms. City Secretary, I have a motion from Councilman Sherlin, a second from Councilman Tips. Do I have any further discussion on this item, gentlemen? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes with a 3-0 vote.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us more to our ceremonial duties here, and so we are going to take the oath of office, and so I'd just like to say your friends and family are welcome. We're actually going to ask you guys to take your oath you're swearing in down here on the floor with your judge. Allow your family members to come up and take photographs while you're down there, and then we're going to go ahead and have you seated up here on the dais and allow you to make your remarks from up here on the dais. So at this time, we are going to start with Councilman Place One, Josh Kraft, if you'd come forward, sir, and then I also have Judge Garcia Flores here that is, that are here to swear you in.
I, Joshua Robert Kraft.
I, Joshua Robert Kraft.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Amarillo City Council Member Place One.
Amarillo City Council Member Place One.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Want to go ahead and have them take any photos right here? We're going to step off to the side. Any other friends and family of Mr. Kraft, please come forward at this time. Y'all can move that microphone just right behind you. Thank you, guys. Yeah, that'd be great, right there's good. Okay, as Councilman Kraft is coming back up here at this time, we're going to have Councilman Simpson come on up with him and his family, and that'll be Judge Hand that'll be swearing him in.
I, Les Simpson.
I, Les Simpson.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of office.
Of City of Amarillo, Council Member Place Four.
Of the City of Amarillo, Council Member Place Four.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And I will do the best of my ability.
And I will do the best of my ability.
To preserve.
To preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I like it. Any family members or friends of?
I have lots of friends, so if you're.
Come on up.
Not much family, I'm only child, so.
Hey, Josh, will you sign that and then give it back to Judge Flores?
Yes, sir.
So as Councilman Simpson signs that, and then he will take his seat up here in Place Four, you've already signed yours and given it back, right? Great. We'll give him just a minute to get up here and get adjusted. All right, Amarillo, welcome to a full council, finally. I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that I don't just speak for myself, but I think I speak for all five of us, and then every candidate that ran in this race, that we are thoroughly excited and thankful and grateful that the election process is finally over, that all the campaigning can be finished and completed, and that we have a full team that's ready to go to work for you, and that we're excited about this team, and that we couldn't be happier about the two years in front of us, and that we truly are ready to get some work done. And so I think you will be very pleased with this council and the way in which that we try to represent you and serve you as our boss out there. So at this time, we're going to go ahead and allow Councilmember Kraft to say a few words, and then we'll hand it over to Councilman Simpson.
All right. Y'all hear me out there? Is it working? All right. Man, I just want to say thank y'all so much. This past six months has been a ride, and I just want to thank my family, my friends, my coworkers, the citizens of Amarillo for trusting me and putting their faith in me to make good decisions. And I know along the way, we may make some bad decisions as well, but I'm a firm believer in that in order to earn grace, you have to give grace. And I know that this has been a calling from God for me to step up in here and take in this leadership role, and I know moving forward, I'll serve you to the best of my abilities, and thank you all so much for electing me as Amarillo City Council Member Place Number One. So thank y'all.
Great job, Councilman Kraft. Councilman Simpson, your remarks, please.
Thank you, and I'd just say I'm honored to be in this seat, honored to be selected by the citizens of Amarillo to serve in this position, and I look forward to doing so. You know, I went to the city website today to look at the names of the previous people. This is a point where you need to say a joke to get me to. Don't know why it's so emotional, but I looked at the previous people who served on this council as mayor and council members, and it's humbling to be up here. I've had the good fortune of getting to know some of those people. My favorite, probably, person that has sat up on this seat, and favorite not only because of the sayings he had, was probably Glenn Parky. I don't know, Glenn passed away not too long ago, but he had some of my favorite sayings, which he, one was which, "I've been mayor for Amarillo, and I've got the scars to prove it." And being on city council will pay you $10 a meeting and calls you all the friends and business you can stand. But I think his testament to that, and what he was saying, as well as many other people that I've known that have sat up here, and then the names of the people that I've seen in previous councils dating back to the founding of the city, and many of those who were recognized as being community leaders, is when you step up here, you place your personal wants, needs, and desires to the side, you work to make decisions that are for the best of the community, not just for a select few, and those are going to be tough decisions. But those are, that's what you do here. You put your personal needs and desires to the side and do what's best for the City of Amarillo. And not only am I extremely honored to be sitting in this seat, but I'm extremely honored to be sitting with these four individuals here who the voters have selected along with me to be able to work and serve, and I look forward to doing that. We have lots of challenges that we face, but I'm confident that the group of people that you see sitting before you will work as hard as any council's ever had to work in solving those challenges and problems, and I thank you for the opportunity to be able to do this. Thank you.
It's a unique thing to have a level of emotion through something like this, because we truly try to treat it as just, well, I signed up, I want to make a difference, I don't know what I can do, but I'm willing to go down there and get involved. And then once you get involved, you see things. So like, I see a young man right here seated with a badge on his T-shirt that I got the opportunity to meet about a month ago, and he shook my hand and he said, "I'm going to be the mayor if you don't do a good job." And I think he might be one day, you know? But I didn't intend to try to be the mayor, and honestly, there's a lot about that that I don't even like. But the things that I love about it is the opportunity to have this experience, like Councilman Simpson said, it truly is humbling to be able to affect and impact your community. It's one of the things that we, like as parents, we get to do with our kids. Nobody has a bigger impact on your children than you. But then in these roles, the important thing that we have to remember is the ability to impact our entire community for the good. And so the way in which we do that, you know, we're an elected representative, we're not a team, we're not a family, per se, even though we're going to work well as a team on different initiatives, we're going to work well together, but we're five individual voices that represent you, and none of us are in a district, none of us are excluded from any one person. And we take that very seriously in the way in which we truly want to represent the republic that we serve here in representing our citizen and our residents. And we already have had the opportunity to all be treated very well through staff, to be onboarded, and it is a learning opportunity. And so right now, what we're asking for is patience from you guys. Let us get onboarded, let us have an opportunity to learn what we need, to learn your needs, and then also to learn our weaknesses, both individually and as a community. Where do we need to prioritize our time, energy, efforts, and money? And so we thank you guys for the opportunity to serve you. We take it with a responsibility, with a certain level of emotion that comes out at different times, and sometimes not always when you really want it to. There will be some stuff in this chamber that's just day-to-day business, but then again, there will be some things that get done in this chamber that go way closer to home than just taxes and potholes. So thank you guys for everyone that shows up here week in and week out and lets us do our job this way, and so I couldn't be more excited about the opportunity to get some work done. And at this point, I will move us to item 5C. We have one item that we need to take care of. Ms. City Secretary, do you have anything that you would like to, well, I guess we can just let you introduce who's presenting?
Max Dunlap, Director of Emergency Management.
Afternoon, Max.
Afternoon, Mayor, Councilman Kraft, Councilman Simpson. Congratulations. It's great to see a full team at the dais. So what this consideration of this resolution is, is to extend the declaration of disaster for the 27 May flooding event. In a sense, and in short, what this document is saying is the fight's not over yet. This is telling Austin that, hey, we're still doing things up here, we have many teams out still working tirelessly. Utilities is one of those teams. They took another hit the other night with the rains, and that's not going to stop. That will continue as long as the rain continues to fall, things like that will continue to happen. So in a sense, what this document is, is to remind the state, we're still working hard on recovering from that, and that recovery battle is not over yet. The city, including a handful of departments, a lot of the directors are sitting in the back left corner of the room, Community Development, Environmental Health, Utilities, Public Works, those are some teams that have been working tirelessly, and I can't just speak for mine. It is amazing to watch what has happened since May 27, and the hours and manpower and blood, sweat, and tears that have gone into recovering our citizens and our community back to trying to get back to a new normal and better. But again, like I said, it is not over, we're continuing that, we are still recovering, and that process takes a very long time. So in a short, this document is just that.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap. We don't do a good enough job, our Office of Emergency Management, they're in the basement, literally, and they're down there, you know, 2:00 AM in the morning, they're responding. They love their job for some weird reason, like when stuff goes wrong, I think they gravitate to it. But what they do is a very selfless job, nobody sees it. You know, when those sirens go off, you just think that they work like they're supposed to. But everything to work like it's supposed to, it requires this team leader and his entire team and everybody else throughout our panhandle community of coming together to look out for each other in our safety and well-being. And so thank you so much for what you've done over the last six weeks now, I guess, and all the effort, and thank you to your team. They're not here today, and we don't get to recognize them, but we're truly grateful for the job you're doing.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd entertain a motion about extending this resolution.
Okay. I move to adopt Resolution Number 070523-2, as presented in the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilman Tips, a second from Councilman Sherlin. Do we have any further discussion on this item? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, I'm thankful to be able to say that passes with a 5-0 vote. All right, we're going to change it up just a little bit. I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. I think I've just been adjourning us, and I think that's fine, but one thing that we are trying to do is just allow things to be ran, not just from the mayor's chair, but from each individual representative. And so the more we're involved in the decisions we make, I think the better job we do is representing all of you guys. So that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn today?
Yes, Mayor, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. That's fine. I have a very professional motion from Councilman Place One, and experiential second from Councilman Place Four. If we don't have any further business here today, all in favor, let's adjourn. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, guys, for being here. We really appreciate you, guys. We look forward to working for you. Have a great week. Congratulations.